Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Isaguac City Council Committee, Infrastructure Committee. Today is February, what's today? The 21st, thank you. And we have one item on the agenda tonight and we're gonna, like we do every month, there's gonna be some follow-up on project status. This item, this primary item tonight is Agenda Bill 7714, amending the Isaguac Municipal Code, Chapter 18.22, Wireless Communication Facilities and Related Fees. This is the second time that this has been to this committee. It was at this committee back on, I think it was January 17th, and it's been twice in front of the PPC, January 24th and I think February 14th. So if anybody wants a more complete history of all the conversations that have been had, you can view those meetings and you can find them on the city's YouTube channel. So to get started, I'm gonna invite Keith Niven, our Director of Development Services. And for Keith, a month ago, when he stood in front of this committee, there were three different people sitting here. And so we're all gonna be pretty well-versed. And Lindsay, who's recently appointed, was actually on the PPC back in January, and so she had that exposure to it. It's my first time in committee to have any conversation. We're actually slated to, well, I noticed in the agenda, it says "D" for Discussion, at least on the, in the packet. And it's my understanding that the route would actually be, okay, that's the online one? Okay, so the one, the PDF one I downloaded had a "D" on it. That's okay. And so we're still, it's slated for, slated for some potential referral back to the full council in the first regular meeting in March. So Keith, with that, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
So, thank you, council member. Keith Niven, Director of Economic Development and Development Services. So we were here last month as just an introductory conversation with the committee. We had not gone to Planning Policy Commission yet, so there wasn't a recommendation out of PPC. And so tonight, I can share that conversation with you and let you know what concerns they had and what they wanted to see in the changes to the ordinance. So I have, as attachments to, to the packet, there is a red line that edits to the existing code, which is less than a year old. So I'm gonna go through my little intro that I went through last time because I had to get it off my chest. So usually, we bring forward code to you guys that we think make the community better. We think we did that a year ago with this code, when it got initially adopted. This go-around is being promulgated by a FCC order that was intended to facilitate the deployment of wireless communication and 5G technologies. And so part of what came out of that order was some direction about timing, in terms of how long it would take, that local municipalities would take to review applications, fees, how much local communities could charge applicants for small cell and macro towers, that there could not be prohibitions for the deployment of this technology. And so, city staff worked with our city attorney, Ogden Murphy Wallace, and Daniel Kenny's here from Ogden Murphy Wallace, and Daniel might be called to answer some questions, if ultimately that makes sense. And so, so here we are. We're doing this because we have to. And we try to keep the structure of our code intact, because I think we thought we adopted a fairly good, reasonable compromise. We took into account and tried to work with the providers as we got comments from them through that initial process. And so what I can do tonight is, I'll let you guys, let me know what would be helpful. In your packet was revisions to the code. In your packet was a memorandum where we went through and basically identified the comments we got from the providers and whether we agreed or disagreed with those comments. That's what I did at Planning Policy Commission. I went through that memo, basically line by line, and responded to why we either agreed or did not agree with, with those comments as they came through. So at your discretion, I can either go through the memo, or we can specifically just go to Q&amp;A, whatever you'd like to do.
Actually, I've had a request, and I'd like to ask you, Keith, the council discussion from last time, if you can recall that, can you summarize what kind of concerns or questions or what the major issues that they addressed in their conversation?
Sure. So, again, the conversation was about the FCC, we talked about the FCC order and what came out of that order and how we attacked the changes to our ordinance. One of the big questions that came up from the committee, the interim committee chair at the time, was a desire to see what this might look like. One of the things that has changed is pole height and the volume of equipment that can be installed with an application. And so one of the questions that came up was, could we see a visual simulation of what that might look like? So that was what I remember from the conversation last time, was really talking a lot about the FCC order. I showed a quote from the mayor of San Jose, which basically addressed the concern about losing local control over something that we feel is a local issue. And we are currently, I think you all know, we're currently in a, kind of a class-action lawsuit challenging that FCC order and the removal of local authority. That's in process. It's at the Ninth Court, which we think is a decent place for that conversation to happen, but that's still pending. Is that helpful?
Okay, was there any other kind of major points or questions or responses from there? I do have some notes from there, I'll get to that in a little bit. I know that there was one question, I'll just ask it right now, if you don't have more, would be, so there's a fee component to this, and maybe we want to talk about that in general?
Sure.
And that, I know that was discussed in length, about what our fees were, what this changes, there was some clarification about costs. It's really, really clear that the FCC rules are, really pushed the fees down.
Yep.
Compared to where we were, and we thought ours were good for cross-recovery and fair, but, but we're not in a position to do true time and materials, because it's both time and materials. And that's a, that's a more complicated calculation. We kinda, our fee structure was, looked more holistically at all the efforts across the, across the department. But I know for a fact, when, generally, I should say generally, when, when there's a edict to push prices down on a service, which a permit service is a service, it's generally so that, well, basically, you get it done sooner and you don't give as much hassle in return. You just, you have to get it done, because we're gonna give you less money for it. So it's really clear to me that the FCC is like, you know, just, you need to get these done, processed quickly, rather than, and rather than being a burden to the applicant, I want to make sure you just get it done quickly. So that's a big issue for us, but could you talk a little bit more about, there was a question about, can we actually go to a meaningful time and materials?
Absolutely. Thank you for that reminder. We did have that conversation. So, so there's, I'm gonna set it up with a little bit of context before I go to the fees. So part of the original code allowed for a consolidation of facilities up to 10 within one permit application, okay? So in other words, as we talked about it with the providers, it made sense for us, you know, if they were gonna do a deployment, say, on Gilman Boulevard, and there was gonna be 10 new antenna, that they could consolidate those into one single application, okay? With the FCC order, basically, it's our understanding of the order that they could request one application for the whole city, okay? So as we talk about permit fees and complexity of permit review, in my mind, there's a huge difference between 10 and maybe 100. I'm not saying that there'd be ever 100 deployed, but there could be, I don't know, because we haven't had an application yet. So, so part of my concern over the fees and the maximum fees that the FCC order would allow us to charge, is that we were going to be, I don't think the council would direct staff to do a cursory job to make sure that we reviewed, so basically for 500 bucks, that's five hours of staff time. That's actually less, it's, it's more like four. So, so, you know, that's a permit tech bringing it in, that's three hours of plan review, and that's maybe an hour of inspection. I can tell you that it's gonna take longer than that with our code, because our codes are fairly complicated. So either one, we were gonna subsidize these applications, or we needed to go to a different outcome. And so the request from last committee meeting was for the administration to look at whether or not we could implement time and material for cellular facility applications. So talked about it with my IT staff. We do have a software program that allows us to track time in plan review and in handling plans. And the feedback I got back was, if we're just talking about wireless communication facilities, whether it's small cell or macro, we probably have the ability to manage that tracking system. We were trying to transition the entire fee schedule in Development Services to time and materials, I would need more admin staff. So, so what's in the red line and the proposed code that's in front of you guys tonight for the fee structure, which is at the beginning of the code, is, our recommendation is to go to time and materials. So the way that that'll work is Development Services staff will need to keep track of the time that they spend on applications. Now, that's not something we're customary to, so are we gonna miss an hour here, an hour there? Possibly. But hopefully, with enough education of my staff, we will be able to document the amount of time in permit review and inspection and recoup those true costs from the applicants.
Did you have a question?
I was just gonna fill in my understanding. My understanding is that the FCC order allows cities to, if they can, capture actual costs, if they can document.
If they can document it, yes.
Yeah, and, and that's what the time tracking would allow us to do?
Yes.
Thank you. Lindsay?
So Keith, I know when this came through PPC, there was some talk about how if the shot clock is reduced in a period of time, that if we get a bunch of these applications in that cover lots and lots of different locations, that you guys obviously won't have the staff hours and the knowledge of this complex set of technology. So we had talked about maybe needing a consultant. Is there the conversation of that portion?
So that's, so, so Development Services already has both planning, well, planning, building, and engineering consultants as resources. So we use BHC planning, we use RH2 for engineering, and then we have a multitude of structural and building plans examiners. And all of those would have to review plans. So for example, you know, if you're gonna install a new pole, you know, there needs to be structural calculations that go with that, somebody's gotta look at the code to see, you know, what kind of design details would be associated with that. So, so there's a lot of touches. What I don't know now, because it's a function of when they come in and what else is in the hopper, right? I mean, so we've got some big permits in now. For example, you know, Costco's new office building and garage is in now. Evergreen Ford just submitted plans for a new dealership is in now. The school district middle school is gonna be in fairly soon. So as, as that workload saturates our department, these shot clocks are very aggressive, and depending on the complexity of the application, we're gonna have to figure out how to meet it. Now, whether it means we prioritize them over other development applications, that doesn't seem great for me, because it should be first one in, you know, get served, you know, to some extent. So we're gonna have to deal with that from an administration standpoint. I don't have a pad answer for you, council member, I apologize, but I think we're gonna, we're gonna, we have the ability to resource up with consultants if we need to, already within our system. You know, that's a different cost, and that would have to be discussed with the applicants, I think, because our expectation would be, we'd recoup those true costs. So, but that's a little different than staff costs.
So on that, do we have the ability, in the way that this is written, then, to recoup those costs as well? Not just our internal staff time?
So right now, it lists time and materials and says applicant will post an initial deposit of $2,000 to cover permit review issuance and inspections. Additional funds may be necessary to complete the permit review and inspection. So at the moment, it doesn't specify whether there, those would be consultant costs or staff costs. Obviously, those are different billing rates. I think it's, I think it leaves the door open for either, as written.
All right, thank you. Stacy?
Well, I think, my thinking is along those same lines, that I, when I pulled up the order today, I decided at 4 o'clock that I didn't have time to read 100 pages. So I think it would be up to the attorney who has read it to tell us what they think the interpretation might be of actual costs. But if the city has to contract in order to get that workload down, I don't know how that's any different from contracting with other, with consultants to get other types of permitting reviews done. And it would seem to be unfair to our community to put all of these technology, all these wireless technology permits, whatever you wanna call them, above everything else, because we also have legal obligations with respect to processing those applications.
Right.
And if we are basing our fees on the cost to review, and we have to hire consultants to review other permits, more run-of-the-mill permits, development permits, then it seems like the consequence of that is unfair to, to the non-wireless community that is putting in, putting in permits. So, you know, I don't know yet where I will fall, but I'm, I'm very interested in the city exploring a dedicated consultant for reviewing these types of applications, for a host of reasons. And those would be actual costs, but I don't know why that wouldn't comply.
Appreciate those comments, and it's, it's my opinion, it really is kind of an administrative decision on how you complete that, and we have the policy question in front of us about whether we fixed amounts or the prescription that came from the FCC, and you're proposing the time and materials. I think that gives you the most latitude. You have a number of different ways you can fill that out, and I think, and I agree, I want to echo my colleagues' concern, that because of the very unusual timing, and I think how it would force us to perhaps reprioritize this over other things that are very vital to us and to our citizens and to the businesses that are here as well, that, that it's really unfortunate that this would pressure us to perhaps set something else aside to do this. So I just want to add my voice to that, that concern, and, but with this proposed way of charging it, perhaps it gives you the best latitude to meet both objectives, both what the FCC dictates and what we're trying to do and provide a, be a service provider to the rest of the community.
And so what I heard was, there's two parts to this. One is, and I'll verify with Daniel that we achieved this first part, and that is that the changes to the fee schedule would allow the city to recoup its true costs, whether it's staff or consultants' true costs. And then, I also heard from the council, a desire for the administration to not, to be able to resource these applications in a way that doesn't cause other permits to be considered secondary or set aside or delayed to accomplish the shot clocks that are in this code.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I gotta point out the real, the real angst I have in this, the justification from the FCC is that we're not burdensome to the wireless carriers, right? But it's clearly a burden to us, right? Not only in our staff and what we're trying to do and the rest of the people that we have to service, but also in the decisions we've made about what's best for our community. So this is really, this is a really difficult one to choke down, because it's, it's about making it easier so that we can be more globally competitive, for some reason, even though we now have data that says we could, it'd be years before we're even 9% penetration anywhere in the United States. But let's make sure we're not slowing down these people who want to build an infrastructure for global economic competitive reasons. But by the way, we don't care if we walk all over, you know, local jurisdictions, both in your preference on how you want to build out and use your right-of-ways and also the demands on staff. So this is not balanced, in my opinion.
Did I mention I'm glad to be here this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so did we, did we get through the fee?
Yeah, I know that, I know that Councilmember Hunt asked about it.
Yes, absolutely.
And I see that you had responded, and now you're going to time and materials. Is there any other comments or questions regarding this?
Yeah, I had, I had two. One, one comment I had is, you know, I recognize we're, you know, we're talking about our local community and not really recognizing the wireless community and the folks who are sitting in the audience here. And FCC ruling is based on the premise that this is in the best interest of business, economic interests, or in our country. So, so I don't know that there's no benefit whatsoever. I think the, I think one of the positives that would come out of, come out of having a dedicated reviewers for the wireless applications would be also that those also wouldn't have any delay. I think it's, there's more certainty for both types of applications, if you have maybe a dedicated, whatever that's, whether, whether it's staff or whether it's consultants. I don't think anybody wants our applications to be delayed. The other thing that I wanted to say is, I'm just kind of doing a word search in the order right now, and direct and actual costs, it's not just limited to fees, it's use of the right-of-way, and so I just wanted to mention that. So we want, would want to make sure that we capture whether we have any cost.
Great.
Okay. Was there anything else from that meeting? So that was one of the outstanding questions, is would you consider that? You've responded. Was there any other highlights from that or questions from the committee last time?
Not that stuck with me, if you want to prime the pump again, there might be something else, but not that, not that I can recall. I did not get a chance to re-watch that meeting from a month ago.
Okay. Okay. And that was the one I had a note of.
Okay.
But I do have, I do, there are a number of other things I did want to ask about. And this, I'm gonna kind of characterize, I know there was, I like the process in that we put it out there, a number of carriers were able to respond, and there was some back and forth.
Yep.
And we got a chance to consider, they've had opportunities to see that. I'm wondering, at least since the, you reviewed it both on the 14th of February with PPC and previously, and back in January with this committee, has there been any other kind of follow-up, kind of feedback or questions from the original respondents that we should be aware of?
Yes, absolutely. So, so getting back to the way we structured this ordinance from a siting standpoint, is we identified preferred, discouraged, and prohibited locations, right? So an example of a prohibited location is we decided we did not want self-facilities on Front Street, as an example, okay?
In the right-of-way.
In the right-of-way. So one of the, one of the requirements from the FCC order is that we can't prohibit deployment, right? So the way that we address that issue in the update is there's a, now a deviation section. So, so if they can demonstrate they cannot find an encouraged location, they cannot find a discouraged location, and that they have to, and that they have to use a prohibited location, there's a process in the code that would allow that. So one of the, some of the, I guess, last, late tweakings of the proposed code has to do with the deviation section. So the first thing is, originally, so these are criteria within the deviation section. And number one basically said that the applicant provides sufficient technical information that demonstrates there are no encouraged or discouraged sites available. That's where we started. The, the providers said there might be other types of reasons, other than technical, why we need to go to a prohibited location. And at the end of the day, we agreed that there probably could be other reasons. So we initially, basically changed this to say the applicant provides sufficient technical or other relevant information that demonstrates. So other relevant information, this is, this, we got hung up at PPC. That seems like that's completely wide open. And, and so, one of the concerns from the Planning Policy Commission was, look at that, try and box that in a little bit if you can, because that just seemed like wide open range. So in the week we've had since the hearing closed, we've been working with the providers to try and put a little bit of detail on what other relevant information might actually be. So, so what you see here in one is, I think, what, what we believe to be a, a, a way to address a concern that was raised by the Planning Policy Commission, as far as the first criteria. The number three, number two, nobody had an issue with. Number three, providers had concern about us asking for indemnity and hold harmless if they go to a prohibited location. We felt like this was a reasonable ask, because basically they're going someplace where we said we didn't want them. And both AT&amp;T and Verizon at, at the PPC hearing explicitly asked for us to remove this. PPC responded that this seems like this gives the city additional protection, and why would we not want this in our ordinance? Subsequent to that, there was a conversation with T-Mobile's rep today, and part of, so we have suggested some other language to be added to this, not to get rid of it, because we don't agree with that, but to add some language that recognizes that they may have signed an indemnity, if their, if their poles are in right-of-way, if their antennas are in the right-of-way, the franchise agreement will have hold harmless and indemnity language already in it. And so if, if that has happened, if that's where these facilities are gonna go, then we wanted to recognize that we don't want a second hold harmless and indemnification policy, that doesn't make sense. So that's why this proposed additional language was, is being suggested for council consideration in item number three. So these are, these are the last-minute changes, there's always last-minute changes. These are the last-minute changes that have come up since the hearing.
Okay, thank you. And I did want to talk some about the, well, you call it deviations, but it was, it's, it's about the location. We had these, and what are the three categories for everybody's sake?
Encouraged.
Encouraged, discouraged, and prohibited.
And prohibited. And I can go to that section of the code if that would be helpful.
Yes, so I know that there was feedback originally, it sounded like, hey, you have a, you have a prohibited area, it sounds like that's a prohibition.
Yes.
And what the deviation does, and this is my interpretation, and I would like to know if you, if, if this is correct, and, and whether or not you've had and whether or not you've had any kind of feedback from the carriers on this view. And when we came up with the, you know, the preferred, discouraged, encouraged, discouraged, and prohibited, it was this community coming together and saying, we understand this has to happen, but we're already here, we're living here, and we all enjoy the service that we get, and there's been great benefit to many people. But there are certain things that we'd like to still retain and not lose that. And the construction and the entrance of a piece of infrastructure, like a tower in certain places, you know, is, you know, it feels wrong sometimes. It may not look, doesn't fit. And so we decide, we did this because we thought this was best for the city. And the way I read what you've done with the code is like, we're saying, you know, we'd still like you to try to fit to this. And if you can't design something that works in our encouraged locations, then give us that reason why, and try to figure, find a solution, map out the city, whatever you do. That may encourage, that may result in some locations in a discouraged location, but give us the technical justification. You can do it, but you have to have the justification. And then as a kind of the next tier would be, again, if this still doesn't work and you feel you need to place some facilities inside of our prohibited areas, they're available, but you must provide justification. And we're saying, we're asking them to try to comply with what we felt was best for our community, but we're also complying with the FCC order that you have a process by which to implement something that's gonna work.
I mean, so, you know, the structure that we came up with, I think we felt very passionate about where that landed. I think we felt like that was the right fit for our community. You know, not, a lot of the peer cities we looked at did not use this structure. But this structure, and again, my recollection is where we started with the original draft ordinance was a little bit of a hybrid between Redmond and San Antonio. And so, you know, where we, what we tried to do was morph our existing structure to meet the FCC order, which basically said, yeah, if you land in that prohibited column because the encouraged and the discouraged won't work, how do we let that happen in a way that is the least impactful as possible? And so that's what the criteria is about, too.
Right, try to make it work within our terms, which we think is best for us. And if it doesn't, you have options.
Right.
And so, to me, that's a call for, you know, cooperation, for respecting kind of the local preference. But not, we're still true to the FCC order about, you know, you do have these other options, which I want to talk about that, what that may represent in some of these actually prohibited areas. But before we go on, I don't know, I want to ask if either my colleagues on the committee had any other questions or comments about the section of the agreement, of the changes. Okay. Let's, we know that we specifically name, so there's the Front Street right of way. Tell me about that Front Street right of way. It's, how wide is it? And is it down the center line of the street?
I'm gonna look at our engineering director and see if he knows. So the right of way basically goes building face to building face. There is no, there's not, I don't believe there's any extra setback before you get to private property.
So their setback is zero, basically? They're right up to the building.
Right. So you have, basically, the right of way is the sidewalks and the pavement.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. But this, but it's still possible, and I think we even encourage that if, that there are buildings, there are existing structures. And, you know, if that works, please use them.
Right.
Instead of putting a tower in the sidewalk.
So, exactly. So there's a couple of different ways that we envisioned that this could work when we had the straight prohibition on Front Street. One was, as you mentioned, structure-mounted or roof-mounted antenna on the existing buildings. The other is, you know, there's alleys and side streets that come back. Obviously, they need a certain height to be able to communicate to other antennas, and, you know, the buildings start to become impediments to that. But there's also opportunities on alleys and, you know, going back to First and First that are behind front on both sides. You know, I think what we were expecting is that there were enough opportunities to complete deployment to meet the needs on the Front Street kind of corridor. You know, at this point, they haven't, I don't believe, done the technical studies which would prove that they can't. That might be part of this process when they actually come to deploy. Now the code would allow the deviation potentially. But I think what we were assuming was, you know, if at the end of the day they could demonstrate that they had to be on Front Street, we'd probably come back and ask for maybe a code amendment, see if the council would entertain that. But we're not gonna have to go down that path since we're here tonight.
Okay, and this is an example where, let's say, something really close to the center line of Front Street is required, and there were no maybe building owners in the immediate proximity that were amenable to allowing something put on their building. And that might be one of those other circumstances, which, hey, we tried, and I think it would be here, but this is the building, and the owner said, no. That would be the kind of justification that this language would allow.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so, and just to unpack that one step farther, council member. So like, criteria number two, right, says that, you know, so let's assume that, let's assume that Verizon comes in and says, you know, we have to put a new pole on Front Street, and here's all the reasons why, and we agree with that. You know, what I assume number two says is we can work with Verizon to hopefully shuffle that pole into a place where it's gonna be the least impactful as possible. So we have places where the sidewalk is really narrow, we have places where we have outdoor seating. You know, I think what we would try and do is work with the provider to put it in a place that still allows Front Street to have that pedestrian orientation as much as possible.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And that speaks, that really reinforces the taking our fee structure to a time and materials. Right, that's, we might, let's work together on this. You've got objectives, but so do we, and we gotta put a little bit more time in this, and let's see if we can find something that works for both of us. That's just more time.
So, that's a great point. I mean, if an applicant comes in and they've picked all encouraged locations, that's an easier permit to review than one where all the locations are prohibited, right? Absolutely.
Yeah. So the height question, and there's quite a bit covered in there about poles. We know that we, if a pole has to be installed, we're, our proposal, I think, says, see if you can do it with 30 feet.
Yep.
And if you can't, you know, you can go higher, but to a maximum of 50 feet. Do you have that correct?
That's correct.
And is that gonna work?
So the original code was 30, and there was a provision, if it's an existing pole, that they could go 15% or up to 65 feet on an existing pole. New pole, 30 feet, FCC order would allow 50. I assume that would work, since that's coming out of the FCC order, and I assume that was heavily influenced by the carriers. So on a new pole, they have more latitude now. They could go 20 feet taller than they could previously. It seems like for them, this is more flexibility.
Does that same height issue apply to buildings or other existing structures?
No. So if they want a structure-mounted, they can put it on the side or on a roof of a building, regardless of the building height.
And it could go over the 65 feet?
Yeah.
And if that works.
If that works. I think at a certain point, what we heard from them in testimony last time was that there's a certain sweet spot for small cell, and it gets too high, and it gets out of range of communicating with other small cells.
Okay. The last time you met here, you were asked the question if we knew about anything. Is anybody standing outside your office with a permit application? And I just wanted to check, just to be thorough, I mean, if there's been any other change. Any other ears to the ground that have?
I have not heard from any of the providers of an imminent application.
There is a section in here that talks about, I think it might even be amateur radio towers. Could you explain what that is? Or is that just, I mean, it was already in the section, you didn't edit it at all.
Right. So this code, this code was originally wireless communication facilities, I think. And it was just really macro cells, macro towers. Because that was the first technological wave that came in, right? So what we did when we created this particular code is we integrated small cell with macro and other types of antenna, which would include kind of ham radio stuff. So in the definition section, it is listed, and it is identified as a certain permit level of activity if you wanted to do that. So the code doesn't just cover small cell, it covers really all communication facilities.
Okay, thank you. There's a question about design, and where has that ended up? We have language that talks about, well, that addresses that. And we are, we do try to encourage, you know, designs that fit within where they're going. And it's not just that. I know you went to this little tower last time.
I love, I love this pole.
But it's more than that, too, right? There is, there are, if there are gonna be visible boxes, what have you, and all of that. Could you speak to and tell us about the design element?
Sure. So we struggled with this when we drafted and adopted the code initially. And that is, Izuaq has a lot of different pole styles in town. You know, the Highlands is different than Old Town, which is different than Gilman, which is different than Squawk, which is, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of different elements. And trying to come up with design that would work everywhere in the city, it just, I don't know that you could do that in a one-size-fits-all code. And so what we did, and the reason why I went to this first, is, you know, we basically said, okay, here's an existing pole that's okay. And if you're a provider and you want to do that pole, here's certainty. You know, this is that certainty part of city codes that everybody wants. They want to know what they can do. You can do this. But if you read what 2D above says is, you know, or is otherwise approved by the designated official, right? So if T-Mobile says, well, we have a pole, and it's, we think it's better looking than this one, they don't have to do this one. You know, if we agree that, yeah, you know what, it's in keeping with the intent here, which is the equipment's either in the base or it's interior to the pole itself, sure, absolutely, go do that, right? So that's part of the design. The other piece is the equipment, right? And what we know in the FCC order and part of the changes here is the volume of that equipment grew by like about 10 cubic feet. And so what the code allows is for that equipment to either be pole-mounted or to be ground-mounted. And if it's ground-mounted, we have language that says our preference is that it goes in a vault. Okay? And I think what we heard was concern from the community at PPC that that pole-mounted equipment is potentially big and could, you know, and as PPC discussed whether we should make the code explicit that it's all on the ground or leave it the way it is, at the end of the day, they left it the way it is. And part of it is, if you think about it, you know, we have some very narrow lots in town. And, you know, if your lot's maybe 25 feet wide and you happen to have a light pole there, your front yard, where that pole sits, which might be behind the sidewalk, depending on where you are in the city, that's your, you consider that your front yard, right? And so the question is, where would you rather have that air fridge? You want it somewhere as high as possible? Or do you want it down on the ground so that you get to look at it and mow around it every day? And so I don't know that there was a right answer. And I guess I'm throwing it out there for you guys to think about. PPC left it the way it is, which, you know what, it could be in either place. I think what we're trying to do, hopefully, is work with the providers. There might be some places where it makes sense to be on the ground, there might be some places where it makes sense to be up on the pole.
Okay, and that was what I wanted to get to. We did with the location, I think, a very creative thing, that we were kind of clear on what our preference was. And please work with us, right? And if it doesn't, try there first, and if it doesn't, go here. If it doesn't, just provide us justification, and you can get all the way over to a prohibited area. I mean, we're asking, hey, meet us halfway. Is there anything like that possible here? I realize that, or do you think you've actually done that? I mean, so PPC did not come out with a stated preference on the ground, on the pole, or under the ground, right?
Right.
Okay. And so where this language does what? It's just, it allows for all, we're not requiring any, and it's just gonna be, here's our design, and, and, this is it.
So if it's on the pole, so what 4A says, is pole-mounted equipment shall be located on the least visible side of the pole and as high up on the pole as feasible. Okay? So if it's on the pole, that's where we said we want it. If it's on the ground, C, number one, says the city's preference not to have above-ground equipment in the right of way. Okay, so that's number one. That says, that to me says, we want it in a vault, unless you tell us it can't be in a vault. And in some cases, where those poles are, we do have buried dry utilities. So gas, power, fiber, cable, and you might not be able to put a vault in. And so that's why we left it as a preference and not as a requirement, because in certain places, that might not be possible. If it's above ground, then we have this section here which talks about how we want you to deal with it. To, you know, in some cases, maybe it gets incorporated into a bench, or there's some sort of public art, or some sort of other way to soften its visual impact to the community. So that's the way the code reads now. We really didn't tinker with that. You know, at this point, this gets back to a little bit of unhappiness I have about, we've had this code in place for less than a year, and we really haven't road-tested it yet, right? So sometimes when things happen, you get some installations, you say, you know what, that didn't turn out the way we wanted it to. Let's go back in and tune up our code a little bit. We're not getting the opportunity to do that because we haven't had any applications come in. I think the expectation is, and part of the conversation that I had with Planning Policy Commission was, you know what, I still think that this gives us the tools to put it, hopefully, the box in the place where it wants to go. And if at the end of the day, they comply with 4A and stick it on the pole up as high as possible, and, you know, Mr. Kapler was right, that that blocks a view of Mount Rainier, maybe we need to, you know, reassess what the code language says. So, I mean, I think if council wants to dig in here, we can dig in here, but we really didn't go in and deal with this, because we haven't had any examples yet.
Yeah, understood. And my thinking was along those lines about location. Like, we had this kind of preferred, discouraged, and prohibited, right? It's like, you know, preferred do this, really, you know. And this could have been addressed that way. This is our preferred. Please tell us, and if it doesn't work, okay, then give us justification. That's more work, and I'm not keen on that right now, of asking for more rework of this, but it's, tuck that away for if we ever, if we do learn from this and need to revise things. Because I think generally, I was part of putting this together, and I think it was very clear, and I agreed at the time, too, that up high in visual is not, is the least preferred. It absolutely is. It absolutely is the least preferred. But you're absolutely right, that it could be a real nuisance in certain situations if it's down on the ground as well. You told about some use cases. And I understand it might be, there might be some reasons that, you know, don't allow it underground as well. So, but this idea of having a preferred and try to fit this and, you know, give us a justification why you can't, and it could be because there's underground, if we wanted it buried, because there's underground utilities, for example. The last, actually, this gets back to location, and it's the last part that I prepared to ask about. It does allow for the right-aways within the residential areas. And it's the same, just like our conversation in, I mean, it could end up in the right-aways in residential areas, these towers. It could be, and just like in Front Street, it's the right-of-way, but we'd be asking them to find some alternative before trying to put it in a right-of-way, public right-of-way. And that could be on even private residential structures, potentially, or on their property, right? So this, so this build-out of this infrastructure, which is really intended to, I think, lay the groundwork for 5G, and I heard that 6G was invented today, so maybe that too. That this could show up in residential neighborhoods, more than there's a presence. The macro towers don't need to be there. And we tried to do with our small cell, like, is try to minimize, you know, find other locations. But this is, now even, even before 5G is upon us, it's possible that this could be a build-out in even residential areas. Could you comment?
Sure. So this was a concern of the carriers initially, and we talked it through with them. So, public right-of-way, if you look at the city zoning map, you'll see that public right-of-way, which we used to have in this building, disappeared. So what you look is, the streets are actually white. They're not showing up as zones. And so the public right-of-way is basically governed by franchise agreement. It's not coming under the discouraged property allowing for residential use, okay? If it's public right-of-way. And so what came up was, what about if it's a neighborhood where the streets aren't public right-of-way but are private streets? Okay? Well, now that is zoned residential. And so we did add some language to acknowledge that. But, you know, it's, it could, you know, it's, and our residential zones do allow for some non-residential uses, like churches. And so this is the distinction that we're making here, is that we have residential property, but then in the strictly prohibited column, we wanted to identify property that's, residential property that's used for single-family. Okay, that, for us, that's the bottom of the totem pole. If they have to go there, you know, now they're in somebody's, in a front yard or backyard or on a private street. And, you know, that's the one where we would want them to go through the deviation criteria below, where we could at least have a conversation about minimizing the impacts by location and trying to work with them under what would be criteria number two. So, and then also, you know, criteria number three, so let's assume it's a subdivision with private streets. You know, so potentially, the street is owned by the homeowners association. If it's in a tract, okay, well, carrier comes in, builds a small cell facility, and homeowners association decides they're at least maybe not happy with that as an outcome. So that's part of the reason why the indemnification, because we wouldn't get the indemnification through a franchise agreement because it's a private street, but it's going in a location that might potentially be litigious down the road, so.
Okay, so let me see if I understand this. So encouraged does include existing or replacement poles. So there's plenty of, in existing residential neighborhoods within Izuaq, there are plenty of poles.
Yep.
Right? In the right-of-way, but the poles are there.
Yep.
And we're basically saying, that's actually our first choice.
Yep.
Right? There are some neighborhoods that everything's buried, there are no poles.
Yep.
And I don't know if getting 6G to those neighborhoods is really everybody's objective or not. I don't know if that's really priority number one, because I happen to live on a street where there are no poles, because, you know, when it was built out in the early 90s, everything got buried. And like, that means, does that mean we're like more likely to get poles for this reason? And because there's not existing ones? But we're just residential, right? So I don't know if we need 6G next to my house. But, so I don't know. But the scenario I'm just trying to understand is, we do have many residential areas where there are no poles and there's just residential structures. Then, I mean, if they wanted to, for whatever, you know, they had their reason, what would that potentially look like in our neighborhood? It could be, it could be up to 50-foot poles
Yes.
in our neighborhoods, where there are, and no poles today.
So if you have buried electricity and cable in your neighborhood, then hopefully you have streetlights. If you don't, and you may not, then everything's going to be on a new pole.
Or can you use streetlights?
It's likely, if, so if the streetlight is not municipally-owned, because that's, again, in our prohibited column, so if it's owned by PSE, that would be the first place they would go. So you would have probably an extender on top of the streetlight and you'd have a cellular antenna there. The problem is that they are not at the frequency that it would allow for, I think, an appropriate deployment within your neighborhood. So there would be additional poles go in. Now, that's the first provider. As we've heard before, the technology today does not allow co-location. So the second provider would say, well, there's a streetlight, but it's already got provider number one's antenna on it, so I need to put my own poles in that neighborhood. And then provider number three says, well, I can't use their poles or their poles, so I'm going to put my poles in, in your neighborhood, because, you know, provider number three says, I got to compete for the same business that provider one and two is. So you could end up with three or four providers' poles in your neighborhood at the end of the day, if there was full deployment and not existing structures that were available.
Okay. Well, thanks for outlining that. I mean, we don't know, right?
We don't know.
And I have no idea of, as the chairman of the FCC said, that, you know, this is all about economic growth and competitiveness, whether or not we need, you know, that requires this in our residential areas or not. But it would be, I'd feel a lot better if we had some sense of that. Because, again, this is about trying to remove barriers, remove barriers, because, so that to encourage economic development and competitiveness around the world. And, but that would be potentially, especially you go into existing residential neighborhoods that don't have many poles now, and they can't share poles, well, that's really impeding upon, you know, the cities and the people that live here. And we wrote a law that tried to manage that. And so I would just, I'm really hoping that that's respected. Again, we don't know if we need 6G in the neighborhoods and we need all those poles, but this is, if that's required for international competitiveness, then, boy, I hope someone can justify that. That's, those are the points that I wanted to ask out. Thanks, Keith, for answering your question. My questions is, either of my colleagues have any other questions for Keith? Keith, is there anything else you want to cover?
I don't think so.
So this, so we are going to be asked to send this back to the full council. But before we do that, would you like, are we open to taking public comment still? We didn't change that rule, did we? We didn't yet. We discussed changing that rule. So I'm going to take this time now, before this body completes its kind of deliberations and making a recommendation, to offer up the podium for a public comment, up to three minutes. And please identify yourself and your affiliation and obviously try to speak to this topic. So would anybody in the audience like to speak?
Good evening, council members. My name is Kim Allen. I'm with the Wireless Policy Group. I'm here representing Verizon Wireless this evening. You've had some really great questions as we've gone through. I want to try to address maybe some of them. I think what I heard is that one of the primary concerns was having three carriers' poles on a single residential street, new poles. Each of the carriers' networks, existing networks, are configured differently. Our macro sites are in different places, our customer demand is in different places, and it is highly unlikely that all three carriers would need to be on the same residential street. Typically, in the more dense urban areas, you'll find us all. But because of the way our networks are configured and where our macro sites are, that would probably be less likely. We would never put a tower in the right-of-way. I think that term was used. It would be some sort of a decorative light standard or a standalone pole. There are lots and lots of different designs and models that we have, and we would certainly work with your staff to find the right solution for each neighborhood. Residential neighborhoods, though, are a focus of, you know, where we need to deploy. People are using their phones there. Their phones have become the remote controls for their lives, and they expect them to work there. Most 911 calls come from cellphones, and more and more people are letting go of their landlines. So we do need to be in residential neighborhoods. There is no 6G. Just let me, let me...
I read about that today.
I've heard, I've heard, but I know nothing about 6G. 5G, though, is coming, and many of the applications that households are using their phones for will rely on 5G. Healthcare applications, your kids are using the wireless network for homework and for educational purposes. So lots of things are going on in the home with wireless that weren't there before. You have, you know, wireless doorbells, technology that lets you look in your fridge when you're over at the store. Some people value that. You know, so I think that we will need to come into the residential neighborhoods. We will do it with the very smallest footprint that we possibly can. Your code requires us to look in other places to try to find solutions that will, that are more acceptable. We're happy to do that analysis. But we respect the tension that the council's feeling right now. I spent 11 years on the Redmond City Council, and I understand where you are. Certainly, the FCC order has made our jobs here on the ground, in this Washington, not the other Washington, a little bit more challenging in working with cities. But we want to come in, we live in your communities, and we want to come in with the least impactful solution that we can, neighborhood by neighborhood, pole by pole. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. And I, before I ask if anybody else wants to speak, Kim mentioned who she was representative, and if you're from the same or represent the same organization, I would ask, if there's more than one of you from the same organization, that you have one designated speaker. So if you represent other organizations, that would be great to hear from you. Is anybody else in the public wishing to address the council? Sir David Kapler, come on up.
Verizon, don't tell them. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. I guess one question and one comment. Comment, I made comments the other night, council meeting, about these neighborhoods where you have narrow streets, sidewalks, very little room, you have all these buried utilities, and the need for the difficulty with going to vaults and that. And I came out of talking a lot with Ken Easman, who is a volunteer with Talis Homeowners Association and deals a lot with issues, and one of their biggest issues, an expensive one, is trees. They got, all these trees are entangled with all these utilities, and it's very, very difficult to deal with it. And vaults are going to be a tough one. I guess the other issue is, here, a lot of staff is going to be working a lot with the applicants and all of that. If they're proposing this on the pole in front of my house or whatever, what's the required interface notification to the people that are going to have this thing in their front yard? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? Anybody else? Okay, thank you so much. All right, so close that public comment period. And so now let's have our conversation. Who would like to go first?
I would like to ask Keith if he could address the level of review.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Councilman Goodman.
The level of review that David Kapler was talking about.
So level of public notice. So we didn't mess with that. I think we got that right the first time. I'll, it's been a while since I've looked at it, so let me find it for you, and we can all look at it together. Notification requirement, so for all Level 2 land use permits issued for wireless communication facilities, so Level 2 would be a new pole, okay? So for all Level 2 land use permits issued for wireless communication facilities, the network provider shall provide written notification of any proposed above-ground installation to all owners of property within 300 feet of the proposed location as part of the permit submittal. So what we decided at the time we wrote this initially, and I think our requirement for public notice was beyond most of our peer cities, was to require public notice if it was a new pole. So if it was new antenna on an existing utility or light pole, I think we called that a Level 1, and there would not be public notice requirement for that.
Okay, and that's because it's already in the public right-of-way? It's an existing piece of infrastructure already in the public right-of-way?
Right.
Can I follow on that? If it is an existing pole that's getting an extension on it, could there potentially be a on-ground addition? If we weren't able to put it in a vault underground, could there still be something that's added to the right-of-way area without it being a new pole?
My understanding is, because this came up, I was actually waiting for the carriers, this came up at PPC. And what I was waiting for the carriers to say was that the box and the antenna needed to be a certain distance, there was a maximum distance away from each other that they could be. So for example, let's assume that you have an existing wooden pole and they're going to put an extension on it, and that ends up being at 65 feet, okay? Is there anything technologically that would require that box to be on the pole as opposed to be ground or in a vault? What I heard at PPC was no. There is a, there's an efficiency piece associated with putting the box closer to the antennas, but there wasn't a technological reason why it couldn't be on the ground. So to answer your question, council member, could it be on the ground with an existing pole? The answer is yes. It could be on the ground.
Okay.
Now, if it's on the ground, then it falls into our design criteria, which says, if you're going to put it on the ground, our preference would be start by trying to get it into a vault. And so they would have to then show us, no, can't do it in a vault, so it's going to be, it's going to look like a box and we're going to paint it purple, and hopefully that works. I mean, so, yeah.
I'd be okay with that. Yeah, that was what I was going to say. Does that mean that would still be a Level 1 permit, which wouldn't require a notification?
So the permit descriptions are, use the shot clocks. So a Level 1 is a new small wireless facility on an existing pole. So yes, that would be a Level 1, which would not require the 300-foot notification under the current code. Now, if the council thinks, well, the box got a lot bigger, so the impact is potentially a lot bigger, and this is causing you to rethink public notice, okay, it's your code. You know, this is...
That would be what I would be interested in, in particular if there is something added at the ground level, or, which would include either a new pole or something that is on the ground. Yeah.
I'm seeing a nod from Councilmember Goodman.
We're still in the formation stage here. So the, and I, and I, and I appreciate the issue being brought up because, because if, if we're in a, if you're in a neighborhood where things are kind of close together, there's a right-of-way, there's a pole, someone's going to put in and put a, and something on an existing pole, but it turns out, you know, there's going to be a box now too. We want that person in proximity to, to be notified, right? The people who live there to be notified. This allows, if that was a Level 1, then there would be no notification.
Right. That's the way it reads.
So how would you, how would you?
So what you could.
What would you propose?
What you could change is.
It would basically be the requirement that it would become a Level 2 if.
So, so right now, you could, so you could change this one of two ways. Either one, you could change this for all Level 1 and Level 2 applications. Or what I heard Councilmember Walsh suggest earlier was for all Level 1 with ground-mounted equipment and Level 2 requires 300-foot notice. So I think you could go to either of those two alternatives by just tweaking a little bit of Section D here. Which one? Ones and twos or selective ones and twos?
Yeah, I would say selective one.
Okay.
It was my preference. I don't know about.
Okay, we can do that?
How would you do that? I mean, us procedurally?
So that would be part of the recommendation to full council would be to modify D and the updated agenda bill would provide the draft language for that. So that the full council can see what you guys are recommending.
If we, if we recommend.
If you recommend it. I said one suggestion and a nod.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, deliberations? I, I, just a few comments then. So Keith, I do, you've, you've put a lot of time into this and I appreciate that. And I do think that there, I, I like the fact that we had a good basis. It was fresh in our minds. We had some clarity on what we thought was important to us. And, 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 and it, if, if there was an acknowledgement of there's tension and I actually, I feel it and I appreciate that acknowledgement. It's really, it's really hard to sit here when you think you're trying to do the best thing for your own community and you realize that some chairman of the FCC has said this is about economic growth and competitiveness when we're in an environment where we don't want to cooperate with people around the world. We just want to do what's best for Number 1. So to know that that federal level objective of let's just look out for Number 1 is now turning into the potential of having, you know, our, our community having to out-prioritize other important work so that we can handle towers. I mean, that's, that's pretty invasive in my, so that is, that, that's, that's unsettling. And however, we don't have any other leverage to us. So I appreciate the work that you've done. I really like the work on location. And, and because it's, gives us a chance to still get a, you know, things happen in a location that we prefer. I appreciate your flexibility on the cost. I think that's, I'm glad to see that adjustment on the cost as well. I think that's best for our city as well. It gives you the most latitude and still meet the objective of, of what the FCC order has done to us. So I really feel that we have no choice. And I think we've done a really good job. And I appreciate all the contact that you've had, the, the legal advice that you've gotten, the collaboration and taking the input and back and forth with the comments that you've taken in. So I appreciate that, Keith. And as it's written with this one change, you know, I'm going to, I'm, I'm definitely going to support this. So if, if nobody else has any comments, then is it, what is your will in terms of this bill? Stacy?
I just, first of all, I want to make sure that you have our, the committee's recommendations about the actual costs and, and can update the agenda bill to include that.
Yep.
May I ask for clarification? And I, because the agenda bill currently says time and materials. And generally that, I interpret that to mean actual, like it calls for. Were you asking for something more clear than that? Some more additional language?
No, I think that the order allows what it allows. And I just think what the will of the committee seemed to be, recommend that the city somehow try to capture actual rect and actual costs as much as we can under the order. And I, it seemed to me that the committee also was asking that those, the wireless applications do not cause other applications to be delayed because of it. So I want to make sure we captured those few levels.
I will put both those into the update section of the AB, recognizing, I like the way that you stated that, Councilmember Goodman, more than, you know, I think the point that one of you made earlier, how, how we staff development services is, is an administration decision. The point that the council is making about prioritization and meeting timelines, that needs to be part of the update. And that will be clear, clearly identified, hopefully. Be my intent, anyway.
I'm going to support it as well. I also want to, and I appreciate the, and understand the comments about the FCC, you know, coming into our world and telling us what we have to do. It really isn't anything new. This is just additional regulation. And it's, we've dealt with federal and state regulations for 100 years. So as much as I, you know, don't like parts of it, it, it's not unusual. And it's just something we have to deal with. So I, I don't think our quality of life is going to be degraded. And I do think we have a, a code that, to the best of our ability, considers our local values.
No, I, I also appreciate all of the work that you've done because we have touched on this so very, very many times. And I would just encourage that as we're going through and getting those first touches that try and push the, the idea and the feel of this as much as possible within the limitations that the FCC has put on it.
Absolutely. And I think that, and I think it was a request maybe when we adopted this code initially, both by PPC and the city council, is when we do get those first applications, you know, let's do an assessment of how effective our code is. And if we see that there's some holes or some things that need to be adjusted, let's make sure we, we do that.
Okay, thank you, Keith. So then I, it is the, by my count, it's the, it's unanimous of this committee to refer this back to the full council, the regular meeting on March 4th for approval as amended.
On, on which, which agenda? I have to ask. It's part of my job. So consent of regular business.
Do you have an opinion?
Yep. So I, I will just say that I would prefer it to be on consent for a couple of reasons. One, it's what, the committee is where we do the work. And if it's on regular business, then we have to have everybody there. It's got to be a presentation. We open it all up again. And any council member who wants to pull it down.
Of course.
Can do that.
I have no problem with that as well. And Keith, we know how much you want to talk about this one more time. But we're going to, we're going to potentially deny you that opportunity and try to put it on consent.
I'll, I'll seek therapy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that, thank you for, for that. That's, we're now going to move on to, well, that was our only agenda item, the, other than the routine project updates. Now, there's some real excitement that happens in our project updates. You may not want to leave, but you can watch it on tape if you're missing it right now. I'm going to turn it over to Sheldon Lynn, our Director of Public Works. And Sheldon, I know you are getting ready to go.
And usually what, allow us to ask questions if we go down everyone?
Yes, I do typically ask if you guys have any questions, which I will do. I just have one project I want to highlight. And it's not a road project. It's a water utility project. Woo-hoo. I pulled the map up here and unfortunately, the, the way the lines are, it didn't work out very well. But in the capital program, there's the I-90 undercrossing for a water main project, okay? And the purpose of that project was to enhance water quality looping as well as to help provide fire flow in the area. Let's see if I can move the cursor without moving the map. In, in this area, which it just helps provide resiliency to the fire flow and everything. We do not have a deficiency in that area today. And then we've been doing some modeling of the utility. And looking at the South Cove area, we realized that that has one supply source. And we found that we could avoid building the undercrossing and make a connection with the water utility along Northwest Sumamish Road between the, South Cove Water Utility area starts right about here, where the main is. And we'll just make a connection through here. And it would essentially provide for the same purpose as the undercrossing. So what we're doing is, is we're providing for another resiliency factor for the South Cove area, which only has one supply source, which is the Bellevue connection. And we're tying it into our 297 zone. So we're moving forward with that. And that project is actually out to bid now. We will open bids, I believe it's next week early. And then we will be in front of council for a bid award on that. But I wanted to inform you guys that we're going to be deleting the I-90 undercrossing from the CIP and it's being replaced by this other project. Same form, function, but it actually adds a little bit more value to the South Cove area as well as still providing the same form and function for the area it was intended for to start with. Now, if there are any questions.
On that, does that come into any of the pinch point idea? Since we know there's potentially going to be construction, I'm not sure, reading that map, whether that's in that same area?
Okay, so it almost reaches the pinch point area. And that's an excellent question, council member. The utility has plans to replace the water main in Northwest Sumamish Road. And when the city comes in and does their improvement for the pinch point area after WashDOT does their stuff, we will be replacing the water main through the pinch point area.
So it's going to be coordinated then? Does one project depend on the other?
It's, no, it doesn't depend upon the other. Right now, what we have is we have, the operations department is going to overlay the section of Northwest Sumamish Road from SR 900 to approximately the beginning of the pinch point work. That's this year. Then assuming everything goes well with WashDOT and they build the retaining wall, then we will have area to work in 2020, 2021 to do our work to provide for pedestrian mobility and bicycle mobility through the pinch point area. And with that project, we'll use utility replacement money to replace the water main through that area at the same time as the pinch point work is being done. So it won't be just the road project. We'll deal with utilities when we go through at the same time. So we're coordinating those two efforts. So when we put the blacktop down, we're not cutting it again in short order. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I would probably ask you more. I think we have a conversation coming up, so.
Sure, you bet, we do, Monday.
Yep.
Yes.
Sheldon, were there any other projects that you wanted to brief us on?
No, none at this time.
Does anybody have any questions about any of them? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you, Sheldon.
You're welcome.
And again, for everybody, people who are wondering, the full list of projects and their status is in, is in the today's packet. And as it is, and it's updated every month if there are changes. So anyway, that's all that we have for this evening. So that concludes this meeting. We are adjourned.